You guys hear us now in this room?
Hi, this is member Trishil. I can now hear you on the conference line.
Okay, thank you.
So for the purposes of those who are online, I will, this is Dan Reese, the chair. We have called meeting to order. We have a quorum. All members are present. We have determined that we are in compliance with the open meeting law. We have held the pledge of allegiance and we are now in public comment. There was no public comment by those present in the room, but we've had some additions. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to make public comment? Saying none, Kim. Is there any member of the public who's participating remotely who would like to make public comment?
I do not see anyone who has asked to make public comment.
Great. We'll close our first public comment session then. And before doing so, I wanted to take this opportunity to make a public comment, which is to welcome our newest member, Reshka Graff. Welcome aboard and we look forward to working with you and on behalf of the agency.
Thank you.
That will take us to our next agenda item, which is the review of our minutes of the February meeting. We've all had an opportunity to review those. And are there any additions, corrections, or changes? I would note to the record that Mr. Graff will not participate in this discussion in or action because he was not on the board at the time. So any comments on the draft minutes of February 15? If not, this matter would be in proper form for most. Oh, you still were doing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number four, which is the time set aside for industry discussion. This matter has been to item four and is on our regularly monthly meeting agendas for the purpose of taking comments, questions, or suggestions and concerns from members of the industry. Is there any member of the industry who would like to address us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
George Calvin with Desert Cab and Blue Desert.
Nice shirt.
Thank you. Just in case you didn't know. So just in general, I wanted to report it's with the conventions that are in town right now. The construction convention is in town. March Madness is down. So business is, as far as the tourism goes, is very, very good. And it's, business has been good basically this entire year, this quarter. But we're still having the same challenges that we, the whole industry has had, which is to get drivers. I mean, I know lots of other businesses are struggling with the same thing. I think our industry again is just relatively unique in the fact that it's... I don't think anybody wants to work the long hours. Cab driving isn't a job that someone grows up to want to be. While it used to pay relatively well, it doesn't pay that well for the number of hours and what you have to go through. And I think that has been a challenge. And we're doing all kinds of other things to incentivize drivers with flexibility of hours. But you know, the meter is the meter. So that has been a challenge. The fact that it's a hard job to begin with, but right now, if any of you drive around Las Vegas, I mean, literally every single street is torn apart, which makes it more of a challenge. And that kind of leads me to the, what I wanted to bring to the board's attention and hopefully the administrator, something can help. It seems, this has been happening to us recently, is that if we're involved in an accident or we have a breakdown of one of our cars, and I understand probably it's because of all the construction that when Metro shows up or sees a car that's broke down, they want it gone quickly. And if our tow truck can't get there to tow it, they'll call a tow truck, but they won't let that tow truck tow it to our facility. They impound. So, which is, we had a car involved in an accident the other day. Not our fault. Metro shows up. They have tow trucks. We said, our tow truck's coming. They said, if it doesn't get here quick enough, we're towing the car. The person who was at fault that ran into us had to have their car towed, and they allowed them to tow that home. The guy whose fault it was got to tow his car home. The cab? Nope, they impounded. And it was $500 to get the car back. You know, I mean, and literally they towed it half a mile. But once it gets into the impound yard, then it's, and not even just the $500. I don't know if you've had a car impounded. You have to prove the title, the registration, have to have a signed letter. Unless I'm going to go down and get it, they'll only take cash. I mean, it's a nightmare of all the people that have to be involved. And of course, when it gets impounded, my cab driver's just left there. So we have to send a rescue car to go get him rather than him riding the tow truck as they tow the car back to the yard. And I don't know what has happened at Metro that it is happening to the cabs. And I haven't spoken to the cab companies either, but this has probably happened to us at least five or six times in the last couple of months. And it never used to happen. They used to allow us to tow the car back to our own yard with our own tow truck, or at the worst case, with whatever tow truck Metro called, we could pay them. But something's changed. So, and again, I don't know how to go about doing that. It's hard to get response from Metro. Metro's, they do what they want to do. That's the law's law kind of deal. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it's a new thing that we're kind of dealing with. Again, it does not happen every day. Thank God, because we don't have cars that are wrecked or broke down every single day. But it is happening and it's a, again, I don't know why. Like, I don't know why it's happening uniquely to us. I do understand why they want the cars moved quickly because it is so bad congestion wise. If you have something broken down in the wrong spot, it's really, you know, makes it even worse. So I just want to, I don't think that creates a situation and opportunity for me to have a discussion with Metro.
I've been around the neighborhood in terms of talking to, I've talked to the airport. I've talked to cities. I've talked to, I'm tired of talking to people. But I'll talk to Metro because I think there's some other issues that we might be able to work cooperatively with. And I'll try to talk to the sheriff or someone up at that level in terms of seeing what that policy is because the policy in terms of what you're saying really doesn't make any sense in terms of what's happening because it shouldn't matter where you tow the vehicle to. And there's no reason for it to be towed to their lot if we can take it to your place. That doesn't make any sense. So I'll get you an answer and hopefully we'll have an answer by the next month or four.
I have one question. That is, do you know in the half a dozen instances, what the timing? This would be a fact that the administrator might need to have in his quiver. The timing of your tow truck showing up versus theirs? I mean, was there a big delta in that or was it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, each time is a little bit different. But for us to have a tow truck there, it's going to take 30 minutes. And that's the reality of it. The, like the one that was just $500 that happened the other day, the, their tow truck was there in minutes. I mean, but, I mean, we, the wreck was kind of at the, kind of in the spaghetti bowl. What we used to call the spaghetti bowl. And the tow company that they impound is literally, you know, stone throw. I mean, it was just right there. So they were able to get there very quickly. And they told us we need to have something there quickly. My supervisor called, talked to our people, said it's going to be, whatever it was going to be, 20 minutes or something. And they said, that's inappropriate. And they, so they impounded it.
Were the accidents such that the vehicle was undrivable in terms of what's happening and it had to be towed? Or would it have been a situation in which one of your line supervisors could have driven it back to the yard?
These, in these occasions, the, all the, all the ones where they've been impounded, the car was not drivable.
Okay.
It had to be, the car had to be towed, yes.
So I will, I will say that there is no law that says that they have to tow it. Generally, there's a contract with law enforcement, with the law enforcement. So if they call in or tow truck, the contract that they have with the tow says they're going to go to their yard and the owner's going to have to go pick it up. But generally, there isn't a problem with having the owner request a tow unless there are other factors. One of those factors could be, especially if you're on the freeway, danger to the drivers, danger to the passengers who were in the wreck and are now outside. So, so I don't know. That's something that the administrator could talk to Metro about, is if, if they've changed their policy to where they don't let the legal owners initiate the tow. But I have a question for the agency. There was a time when the Tax Cab Authority was, I think, primarily responsible for traffic accidents that were involving cabs. Is there any plans to go back to that?
If I can, if I can get an increase in staff in terms of what we're talking about, the inspectors were the ones that did that. And then in bumper taps and things of that nature, what ended up happening was that we allowed our dispatch to do that because of less staff in terms of what's happening. We do send the officers out to certain accident scenes in terms of that. But as you know, they're on patrol in most cases and questioning how long they can get to that. What I think I need to talk to Metro about also too, as terms of their responding to things versus our officers responding to things that may be more elastic. We do it as opposed to they do it, but we have to work out something in order to see how we can do that in terms of making sure that I increase response times in order to be able to get our officers to accident scenes when that situation comes up.
Well, I happen to know that the TA cars are equipped with the same lights and sirens that natural cars are.
They are.
But, but, what's the, what's the word? Deployment in terms of where their location is versus getting to the accident. I guess that's the question I'm having in terms of timeframe, because you were just talking about a timeframe in terms of getting something out. If I can get people from point A to point B as quickly as possible, and I understand what you're saying, that, that's the issue.
Well, I don't think that's the issue. I think, I think the issue is, is, is there's all kinds of accidents that happen without the primary jurisdiction being the closest unit.
Correct.
So my, myself and my agency, we respond to traffic accidents all the time that we come across. We secure the scene. That doesn't mean that we're assigned primary responsibility for the traffic accident investigation. We don't do those at all. So we wait for Metro or NHP to show up. They take over and they do the accident investigation. I think it's a matter of the agency capability, policy as to whether they're going to be primary for traffic accident investigations regarding cabs, which is what I'm saying. I think the TA, prior to my being the administrator there, at one point when they had the appropriate staffing, were able to do that. So Metro or NHP or whoever else responded to, were the first responders, could secure the scene. TA shows up when they, when they can get there and they conduct the traffic accident investigation, which means they're responsible for disposition of vehicles on this side of the road. And that might be more responsive to the needs of the industry than, you know, whatever agency happens to respond that decides to, you know, clear the road, that kind of thing. I think if you had the staff and that was the agency policy, I don't know if you have the staff. But I know you've requested some.
Requested additional staff in which right to build backup for.
And again, for us, it was, the only reason that became alarming to me was is that if, if there's a two-car accident and, like you said, it's on the freeway and they impound both of the cars, okay. But if they're impounding one of the cars, mine, and they're letting the other car get towed away, that makes no sense to me as to why that would happen unless there's something that's changed. And that, that seemed arbitrary.
And I think, I think we need to know from them what exactly is the policy? And is there any wiggle in terms of what we're talking about? And I think that's more of a discussion in terms of that and getting information. Once we get that information, we can act.
I mean, we have a supervisor there. I mean, if Metro allows us, push the car out of the way and then, then you can wait 30 minutes for your tow truck. I mean, there's got to be some kind of options versus all that's involved in leaving the cab driver there and having the car impounded. So.
The only other issue, it's not pejoratively, but I don't know if there's a fiscal reason for doing this, i.e. Metro makes some money or it needs to provide so many.
Toes.
Toes to keep its contract in place. And we need to know if this is a fiscal maneuver versus a just public safety. And I'm not saying that pejoratively, but there are, there can be multiple motivations for a particular policy change.
What, what's the word that, that's the question I had to ask carefully and diplomatically?
I mean, if there is, it's public. It's not a, it's not a secret. It can't be confidential. But what I would say is if there is, there is, that's all the more reason for the Tax Cab Authority to make it known and have a policy that they have primary jurisdiction over traffic accident investigations for cabs, when cabs are involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other industry discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll close agenda item four and that will take us to agenda item five, staff reports.
Number one, update on the joint operation with City of Las Vegas Downtown Parking Enforcement. We had, I believe it was last month, we had a Friday and Saturday in which we had a joint operation between our enforcement as well as Las Vegas Parking Enforcement because of issues that existed in terms of traffic crimes and other things of that happening downtown. What I'm understanding, that enforcement operation was successful and that was the first of many cooperative adventures that we're going to have with the City of Las Vegas in terms of trying to ameliorate the problems that the taxi cabs have down there as well as the problems that parking enforcement thinks that they have down there. One of the things that we talked about at last meeting was the increase in the number of taxi stands. And I think that your idea was well taken in terms of the possibility of talking to give me control about the possibility of increasing the amount of taxi stands, the locations of taxi stands in order for us to stop writing tickets relative to the issue of whether someone is in a taxi stand or not in a taxi stand in terms of picking up in terms of certain locations. From what I'm understanding, that problem isn't as acute on the strip in terms of taxi stands and things of that nature. But the problem is extremely acute in downtown Las Vegas. So that is a work in progress and we're still working to that in terms of trying to get that resolved. Also the same thing that I've had meetings with the airport too in terms of their issues relative to, we'll use the pejorative term of 86ing individuals from them not being able to pick up or drop off anyone at the location because of actions that happened. I asked that they allow us to have primary jurisdiction of that situation and that instead of calling Metro in those situations that they call us in terms of what's happening so that we can better deal with the issue of a driver that might be problematic that creates a situation short of stopping them from being at the airport in terms of trying to de-escalate the situation as best we can. So that's something that I'm working toward in terms of a partnership with them in terms of being more responsive to the airport, having more patrols of the airport. So our staff is visible and available if there are problems at the airport that their parking enforcement, their parking enforcement people. Another thing that, in terms of, we can move on to the next one, update on the battle legislature.
First of all, before you do that, does any member of the board have questions on the parking situation downtown?
When you say parking, do you mean, you mean pick up and drop off, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. For the airport especially, in terms of pick up and drop off in terms of that. Because what the airport was doing, if a person became, in their term, negligent or not cooperative in terms of doing as the airport officers ordered them to do, after a couple of encounters, the airport would suspend that person's ability to pick up, drop off, or come to the airport. It's almost like a trespass order in terms of them not being able to come. That creates a situation with the companies, that creates a situation with the taxi cabs in terms of that we, we can't have. But since we are not aware of what is going on because they are reporting these things to Metro as opposed to reporting them to us, we're not in the loop in terms of what's happening. So I'm asking them to change their policy preferences to report to us and we'll make sure that we have additional presence at the airport so that they can report to our people so that we can deal with the problem before it gets to the point where someone has to be 86 from the airport.
So I know you're going to tell us in the next section, how many, how many officers you've asked for in your budget. But I think we, the last 15 minutes has given you a pretty good justification when I asked in your budget hearing as to why you need new people.
Yes. At this, at this particular point, we are hiring two additional.
Can we, is that responsive to, is that on this topic or are we?
It's, I think we need to stay on that topic and we'll move to the next one in a minute. We have asked for two additional officers in the next budget cycle in terms of what's happening. We're going, we're adding two at this particular point. I'm probably going to need more. And what's going to end up happening is I need to do a work program. But the problem with the legislature is that I can't shock them too much in terms of what is going on because if I ask too much, what ends up happening is that they have a tendency to recoil at certain things. So we have to ask for what we want incrementally. And that's something that I'm trying to do at this particular point.
I'm going to give you a piece of advice as someone who's been in administration for 10 years. And I, my guess is that Don will agree with me, but there are four months out of every biennium in which you do not mention work programs and we're currently in one.
That's right.
Because if you're planning on work program, programming anything during your budget cycle, the question is going to be, why didn't you put it in your budget? So I would not.
And, and we wouldn't be doing that. We would be asking for the additional staffing after the session is over. Not the situation in which we'd be asking during the session is over because that would be a question that would come up. And that's not one that I think that we need to want to answer at this particular point. Also, one of the things that I say, even though the legislature, the governor's finance office wants to hear, is that I took on this position in April of 2022. The budget's closed in January of 2022. So to a certain extent, I, as a person, can only, could only at that particular point work around the edges as opposed to what was happening and ask for, ask for dispensations in terms of saying, could you cut me a break in terms of these particular things? And I'll have better control of the next budget session as opposed to the one right now. So I'm getting what I can get and then we can go from there.
So what you're saying is officially, you're going to ask in your 2025 budget for more personnel. And if at some point during that biennium, the need becomes critical and you have to go to the IFC, you would consider it at that time?
Yes. Yes, that's what, that's what I'm going to do. And that's, that's the state system and that's the way we have to do things. Update on the battle legislature.
Any other members have questions on this? Mr. Graff, are you?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, there were, there were times in my experience, and I understand this actually came from LCB, when you're trying to ask for a big chunk, they always would suggest, why don't you break this in half? So if you need four, you get two one year, then in the middle of biennium you get two. And somehow that seems more palatable. So if you need four, you get two one year, then in the middle of biennium, you get two and somehow that seems more palatable. And they really looked at us like that. We know you got the money, but it's just easier to chew and you wind up taking that advice and doing it for years after that, not having any questions.
Right. That's, and 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 that's, that's, that's the issue. Even though. I can make a case for the need for what we need. If I ask for it all at once, it's not that they would have a problem in terms of saying that it wasn't justified or not justified. It's just. A lot of questions because they have to take my budget into account with other people's budgets and those kind of, those kind of things, even though I can also make the argument. But. Madam or Mr. Chairman, the, the money that you're talking about is money that's coming from the industry and it's not money. Coming from the general fund, but that argument sometimes has a tendency to fall on deaf ears.
Member Trio, did you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Next one, now I can do the update on the Nevada Legislature and potential legislation. The only thing that we're following at this particular point, there is a. Joint Senate and Assembly Resolution that I will testify tomorrow on dealing with. The possible recommendations made by the Sunset Commission relative to the combination of the possible combination of the Nevada Taxi Cab Authority into. The Nevada Transportation Authority.
Sorry, hang on. Can I interrupt you? Is that what the recommendation was?
No, that isn't what the committee does, but I'm going to tell you what the recommendation is in this particular, that's not what the recommendation was. That was just what the committee's charge was. Well, the ultimate recommendation was, was to. Create a study in. In government affairs, specifically for a two year period of time, interim study for two years in order for us. Both the Nevada Transportation Authority as well as Nevada Taxi Cab Authority. To do a full and complete review of all their regulations as well as a full review of all their legislation and also provide. A framework for both of the organizations since basically all our regulations is. Some, ours are more than 70 years old, some of theirs are like 50 years old. So to a certain extent, I suggested to the group that. Until we all got our laws together, that a discussion as to whether or not what parts or any parts should be combined is not a discussion that we are all ready to have at this particular point. What we first need to do is get all our statutes and basically update everything to where it needs to be. And then we can make an intelligent determination as to what needs to happen. So for two years, we're going to go through an interim study through the. Through the legislature and the legislative committee and they will ultimately provide proposed legislation for the next session as well as. Proposed regulations for the next session so that we can modernize our operations so that then we can intelligently deal with this question that. This committee has been charged to deal with. We're in the process of doing that right now. We're also in the process of doing a review of all our regulations pursuant to governmental order at this particular point and. Providing that information to the governor as to what regulations should be. Should be revised, should be removed and those kind of things. And we're presenting that to the governor before April 1st deadline that he has for receiving that information. We will let you know as to what happens with that information once the governor receives it, the governor's response is. Enforcement investigation.
Any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my agency is also doing the mandated reg review. We're required to. Propose 10 regulations that can be eliminated or modified to loosen regulations on industry. I will tell you that we. Came across some that overlap with NTA. And if we are overlapping with NTA, I promise you that you are. So I would just recommend that whatever you submit and whatever NTA submits, that you guys get together. Beforehand and make sure that there is an impact to the cross agencies that's unintended because we found that that was to be the case.
I know because they have a lot for eighty two situations in terms of NTA from what I was looking at the stats.
I have nothing.
What is the proposed omnibus bill? A B S B, what's the number?
Is it, is it, I think it's AJR six.
Assembly joint.
Yeah.
Thank you. Member Trio?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
T A stats. Total monthly trips from 2022, they're up. One million eighty five, four twenty six was done in February of 2023 versus nine hundred forty one thousand eight hundred twenty nine. We've been basically. Hovering around the 1.2 million rides per month period. So this seems to be a little bit down in terms of that number, but. I don't expect that's something that is. That significant in terms of what we're talking about. And we are up from the last. Time in terms of 2022. Revenue per trip pretty much stayed the same, eighteen forty one for employee revenue per trip versus nineteen oh eight. Revenue per trip in February of 2023. Our combined trip comparisons for February, as you saw, is the one, one million eighty five thousand point twenty six. Which are the number of trips that we've done in February twenty two versus nine hundred forty one thousand eight hundred twenty nine trips, an increase of fifteen point two five over year to year. Next one is the year to date comparison in terms of employee trips revenue versus lease trips revenue. And. As you see, the lease revenue is a little bit higher per trip than the average employee revenue by about thirty cents in terms of. February of 2023 versus February of 2022. Credit card transactions, it looks like they're a little bit down by about fifteen percent from. January twenty twenty three versus February of 2023. We're doing pretty good in terms of our elderly rides, elderly and disabled rides, even though. They're a little, they're a little bit down from the same period last time, but. We're working on that in terms of making sure that the elderly and disabled rides are happening in terms of the companies and what we're doing and monitoring that. We still have the same number of medallions, three thousand five hundred and thirty. And we have, in lease medallions, we have one thousand and fifty one. Members of our citation violation report, it seems that the majority of our citations, we're basically dealing with eight, four, five, twelve. Which deals with violation or obeying all laws. That could be a traffic law, that could be whatever in terms of what a taxi driver does. That's a majority of the citations that we seem to be giving. We seem to have an issue a little bit. It's a little bit higher than what it needs to be in terms of the rotation of taxi stand in terms of number of citations, in terms of dealing with that as well as. Interfering with traffic when loading, which is, which is, which is, which is a twelve number citations given for that. So those are areas I think that we probably need to look into. As to why we seem to be having more drivers in those, in those, in those areas because we do try to analyze these stats in terms of trying to do targeted enforcement in terms of working areas. That we seem to have problems with and how we can be better served in terms of trying to solve the problems as opposed to just writing citations on those matters. Monthly vehicle report, these are the number of inspections that were done relative to our inspectors, both for accidents as well as. Vehicle inspections on a monthly basis. As you know, pursuant to statute, we are allowed to inspect every vehicle in a taxi fleet once a year. That is dialed into what our inspectors do per month as well as the accidents and things that. Create situations in which a taxi needs to be put down for either 24 hour period or put down until such time as things get fixed. Investigations. We have a number in terms of our impounds in February of twenty twenty three of five impounds at this particular point. That's an area that we are going to. I believe increase enforcement on because that is something that seems a problem that the industry has. Made clear to me as well as the hotels have now made clear to me as well as the drivers have made clear to me that that's an area that. I think we need to do stepped up enforcement in that area, even though that area does have a tendency to have more risks to my officers relative to what's happening. But what we're. Most concerned about is making sure that people that are trying to operate this as a business are basically dealt with in terms of that. We're going to change shifts in terms of our officers or officers are more in the field at times in which there are problems that happen in the industry, more nights. And more weekends. So that's something that we're going to try to do in terms of working on shifts in terms of times in which. The industry has problems as opposed to just having these regular shifts in terms of what we have. So we're trying to be, we're trying to police smarter with the number of people we have as opposed to just policing, just to be policing.
I'm going to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Question. So. So this is on the, well, let's, you can stay on the investigations. That's, but your citation violation report. Shows a very effective spectrum of citations compared to the agency's history. So they're getting, they're getting good at writing. Finding violations and writing citations for it. That's impressive. I will say though, that the unlawful ride or hires. The unlawful passenger transport, which, you know, you got up 500% because last, last month it was zero. Now it's five. But there are hundreds and hundreds of them out there. Your officers or police officers are equipped with. Risk mitigation, risk mitigation equipment and that's their job. But the reality is. The UPTs, the unlawful passenger transports are, present the most danger to the public. Because you have people that are not capable. Are disqualified generally from obtaining a Uber and Lyft permit, which is very easy to do. So this is the worst of the worst out there making illegal money in cars that they rented or stolen. By offering rides and people getting into cars thinking it's equivalent to an Uber and Lyft and it's not. It's equivalent. In many cases into getting into a wanted felon stolen vehicle and paying him 20 bucks and hoping that you're going to get to your destination. It doesn't always happen. So I would just present. From my perspective, the, the idea that those, that presents the most danger to the public, I think. And if you're going to step up enforcement. In that area, that would make me happy.
I think that's something that we have to do. It's not something that. It's an area that is extremely concerning and an area that needs to be dealt with. We would like to work with the NTA and hopefully dealing with their enforcement staff in terms of maybe that would. Double the ability for us to do both in terms of doing some joint operations as to, as to this area, but this area is a problem. This area must be.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I always ask, how are we doing with hiring? That's the, that's the staff report I'm. At this particular point where we are, this particular, we're in the process of doing background on two. Enforcement officers at this particular point. That's what we have in enforcement. We have. One AA three that will be my staff support. We're in the process of starting the hiring process with that. We're also in the process of dealing with replacing our MA two that left to Mr. Deckers operation.
Promotional opportunity. Promotional opportunity.
Promotional opportunity. I, I never stand in the way for anyone's promotional opportunity. But that process is ongoing and will be hopefully completed within the next month or two. We are in the process of finishing up the paperwork in terms of doing that. What we may do is be an MA one underfield in order to build the MA two position because we weren't. Thrilled with our first round of MA two, MA two candidates.
Do you have an internal candidate for that underfield? Is that why you're doing it?
Yes, yes.
So where does all that leave us as far as vacancies?
At that point, if we have all those positions filled, we would have vacancies at that particular.
Oh, wow.
We would be, we would be, we would be fully staffed. Basically, based upon our.
Unexisting.
Yes.
Unexisting positions. Wow. Are you 100% enforcement officers right now?
We, like I said, we're still in the process of hiring. Two, one is going to be a one underfield that will send to the academy and the other one will be an actual two.
Gotcha. You know which academy you're sending that person to?
One that is. First of all, our, our plan is to at least have them on site for at least six months in order for us to. Be able to review them, then send the individual to academy. We want to send them to an academy. They can either be there all the time or. A part-time academy in terms of what's happening. We really don't have preference in terms of which way we go. There are none. I know there are some. DPS academies, but there's also other academies for category two police officers. I'm, I'm not. Your expert in terms of which is the best. I leave that to my officers in terms of telling me which ones would be more appropriate for the people that are coming through our system.
So I'll just tell you, they're all good, but DPS is free. True to other state agencies. Nevada Post, which is in Carson City, is $600 or something like that.
The money never was a concern to me. It's just.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Okay.
And the private academies that is run down here that is kind of part-time outside of work hours is in the over 5,000, I think. So money might not be an issue, but it probably is an issue when you're talking about free to success.
I would probably want to use the academies that specifically are connected to our law enforcement agencies at that particular point because they do similar things that we do. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Member Trio, do you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No, no questions.
I have a request. It's not too onerous and I don't think it is because you already have the metric. On the last four reports.
Right.
Were you giving us a monthly stat? Could we have a second column year to date? Where you just give us.
Oh.
What you reported in the previous periods in the same year so that there is a rough trend.
Okay.
Concept there.
That's fine.
Yeah. Thanks. So, repeat your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Next agenda item is any reports for information to be provided by legal counsel, Ms. Corrigan, Ms. Bligh.
None for me and our DAG is appearing remotely.
Yes, and so DAG, Russell, is there anything you need to report to the agency?
Sorry. No, I do not. I'm just here to cover the meeting.
Great, thank you. Future agenda items, anything?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trio, do you have anything, future agenda items?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
No, thank you.
I would like to ask you to put on for next month a selection of a vice chairman. And I'm. Not opposed if the board wants to also revisit chairman.
We don't.
We're good.
That was a nice try.
I wasn't trying to get out of it. I was trying to get. Believe in opportunity. Is there anything else on agenda item six from members of the board? If not, we'll close that.
No.
Great. That takes us to agenda item six, which is public comments. This is placed on our agenda for the purposes of. Receiving comment from the public on matters within our jurisdiction. We may not take action at this meeting on those actions, on the matters brought to our attention, but we. Very much welcome any comments from the public on matters within our purview. Is there any member of the public present in the room who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who is participating remotely who would like to?
Yes, we have one person. Mr. Anderson.
Good morning, everybody.
Could you please state your name and?
Chris Anderson, transportation manager, Harry Reid International Airport.
Great.
I just wanted to advise the industry, starting Monday, the 20th, we are going to have some construction going on in our T1. Taxi staging area. This will be done in two phases over 12 weeks. So we will be losing. Half of that staging area. So there may be times where we have overflow that we will be moving. Cabs out of that area just because we won't have enough space for everybody to stage. We're hoping that 12 weeks is cut down to 10, but we won't know until we're done with phase one, how quick that's going to be. phase one how quick that's going to be. I just wanted to let the industry know that.
Great. Any questions, Minister?
Members? Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I don't know why you don't do it the way Reno Tahoe is, let's just rip up every part of the airport all at one time.
We, yeah, we should be more like Reno and Salt Lake and just tear everything down and build new.
Right.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you very much for.
Any other member of the public just sitting remotely who'd like to make public comment? Hearing none, we'll close public comments and that would bring us to our final item. It's appropriate to confirm motion to adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. Any questions, comments, or rebuttal on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say in the die by saying aye.
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 Very good. None opposed, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much to the public and to staff members.